Good evening, and I would like to welcome everyone to this evening's April 20th, 2023 monthly meeting of the Henrico County School Board. The first item on our agenda this evening is actually the approval of the agenda. Board members, may I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Ogburn. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance and the Moment of Silence typically led by our superintendent, Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you Chair Kinsella. Good evening, everyone. So glad to have you with us. And we are so pleased to be welcoming student guests to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We begin all of our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be followed by a moment of silence. So, once our students come forward and begin the pledge, after the pledge, if you'd remain standing as you're able for the moment of silence. But I would now like to welcome the principal of Cackley Elementary, Jennifer Roden, up to the podium, and she'll introduce and bring up the students who are going to lead us in the pledge. And as she's introducing them, we're going to get in place, and they'll let us know when it's time to stand for the pledge.
Well, good evening. What an honor it is to be here. I'm at Cackley, which I have it written on my shirt so that you can understand. And I'd like to welcome our SCA officers. We have Ellie Visconti, we have Avery Visconti, and Alex Terry that will be leading us tonight in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'd now pause for a moment of silence, which can be used by those in attendance for a moment of prayer, meditation, or reflection. That concludes our moment of silence. You may be seated. And a big thanks and round of applause for our students from Cackley. And the board and I are going to be making our way to the front now for our next item, which is our performance highlight, which is featuring students from Mayford Elementary School. We're so excited to have them with us. So, we're going to take a seat and turn the stage over to our performers.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues and guests. My name is Christopher Mosley. I am the Education Specialist for Performing Arts. And it is my pleasure to introduce for our performance highlight this evening, Ms. Stanley's class, kindergarten class from Mayford Elementary School, under the direction of Ms. Chrissy Ragnar. She is in her seventh year as a music teacher at Mayford Elementary School. Tonight, the students will perform two selections, one entitled "Steady Beat", which is from our Quaver Music Elementary resource, and another entitled "Famous Americans", which I believe you all created. You wrote the lyrics, sorry. Very good. Tonight, we have an attendance, the very proud acting principal, Dr. Rich Hall, and associate principal, Ms. Sarah Blackburn. Could you all please stand to be recognized? And Sarah Stanley is the teacher. Their teacher, all right. Thank you so much. Their teacher's name is Ms. Sarah Stanley. Oh, Stan, I'm sorry. Please, stand up. Yes, very good. Of course, you're here, right? All right, very good.
Thank you. They were precious, beyond precious. Yeah.
I said yes.
A huge thank you and applause once more for our incredibly talented and adorable pandas. They certainly represented Mayford well. What a tremendous performance. It's always a pleasure to feature our incredibly talented students here for our meetings. It is truly a wonderful part of the evening. Another wonderful part of the evening coming next will be recognition of our REB Award for Distinguished Leadership. Dr. Farrell is coming forward for that recognition, and a few board members will be joining down as well. Following this recognition, we're going to hear about recognition for VHSL 4A and 5A state champions, coming after that.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, and attendees. It is an honor for me to stand before you this evening to recognize Mrs. Karen Castillo-Rose as the recipient of the 2023 REB Award for Distinguished Educational Leadership. At every school event, Mrs. Castillo-Rose can be heard yelling, "Behold!", and her students and staff respond, "The green and gold". A school principal is not only a leader of instruction, a principal is also the chief leader of culture and school spirit. No matter the day, KCR, as she is affectionately known, wears a permanent smile on the campus of Henrico High School. There is always a bright side, and the glass is always half-full for Mrs. Castillo-Rose. During her tenure at Henrico High School, Mrs. Castillo-Rose has worked tirelessly to expand opportunities so all students have access to the most rigorous courses offered at her school. This includes advanced placement courses, dual enrollment courses, and IB courses. Mrs. Castillo-Rose truly believes what's good for some is good for all. This belief encourages the students at Henrico High School to dream big and to aim high. Although she wears a permanent smile to work each day, Mrs. Castillo-Rose has lost multiple students and staff members during her seven years as principal. She's currently in year eight. The ability to lead during turbulent times is the mark of a great leader. Mrs. Castillo-Rose has always done an excellent job of galvanizing her students, staff, and community, and leading with grace through each tragedy. She is truly a special person and a special leader. In addition to becoming an REB Award winner for distinguished educational leadership, a $10,000 cash grant will be given to Mrs. Castillo-Rose, and an additional $20,000 grant for Henrico High School has been approved by the REB Foundation in conjunction with the Community Foundation. Based on her proposal, Mrs. Castillo-Rose plans to create spaces for mindfulness, implementation of grief circles, and engage curriculum writers to create culturally appropriate curriculum. All of that sounds amazing. Please join me in congratulating and welcoming Mrs. Karen Castillo-Rose.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues and guests. Tonight, we recognize our winner of Virginia High School League State Championship Teams. At this time, I would like to invite Assistant Principal Carl Torrance, Director of Student Activities Tom Nadeau, Coach Katrina Gaunt, and Captains of the Mills Goywin Boys' Swim Team Aiden Jacobs and Seamus Connell to come forward. The Goywin Boys' Swim Team had an undefeated season, leading to a regional and Virginia High School League Class V State Championship. Every member of the nine-person state team advanced to the finals, placing top 16 in the state competition. Seamus Connell, Aiden Jacobs, Harrison Newhouse, and Eric Lambert broke the 5A state record in the 200 freestyle. Goywin Boys Swimming has now won back-to-back Class V State Championships. Congratulations on another outstanding season. Next, we invite Principal Darren Thompson, Director of Student Activities Kevin G. Adams, Head Coach Kenneth Randolph, Assistant Coaches Canard Weiss Sr., Terrell Twitty, Erin Rose, and A.T. Taylor, and Members of the Verona Boys' Basketball Team KJ Weiss, Jerome Conway, Joshua Hughes, and Malice Deracott to come forward. Put the post guys in the back. Verona Basketball defeated EC Glass 59 to 56 to win the 4A State Championship, earning the school back-to-back state championship titles. Numerous players were named to the All-Region and All-Metro Teams. KJ Weiss was the Region 4B and Class 4 State Player of the Year, while Coach Kenneth Randolph received the Region and State Coach of the Year Awards. Congratulations on another fantastic season.
Congratulations again to our REB Distinguished Leader, as well as to our VHSL 4A and 5A state champions. The next item on the agenda is our Henrico Highlight, and this evening we are celebrating the amazing learning, innovation, and collaboration taking place as we support students on their journey to become life-ready. Recently, the division hosted the 11th Annual Henrico 21 Life Ready Learning Exhibition, where students from all 75 of our schools shared information about the learning process and displayed exhibits representing the knowledge, skills, and attributes of the Henrico learner profile. As you'll see in tonight's brief video, the night was filled with excitement and passion for student-centered teaching and learning that takes place every day at each school and every classroom, and in some cases, outside the classroom during collaborative activities and field trips. Take a look.
Henrico 21 is our annual student learning exhibition, where we bring students and teachers and leaders together from all of our Henrico schools.
It was an opportunity for students to take the skills and strategies that they are learning every day to meet proficiency with our Henrico learner profile and put those into action.
This is my house. I made this house very modern.
It has two QR codes inside. One leads to this map, so you can take a Civil War trip all around Virginia.
Your body is building new cells. You'll see that this is the process of how we do it.
Henrico 21 really embodies the heart of Henrico, and that's our learners. And everything we do and highlight and celebrate through that event is really in support of the students.
Would you like to go to ancient Rome? So, you're in Rome, like.
So, this is our project. It was modeled in sort of the idea of StoryCorps, which is...
So, students start projects at the beginning of the school year, and they work throughout the school year to become more proficient in those durable skills or soft skills, our six Cs called out in our Henrico learner profile, to really become more proficient in those skills and strategies. They're able to showcase their work at the end of the year at Henrico 21.
So, this is live from Jamestown. So, my project is about Marcus de Lafayette.
I think for me, what really resonated was the spirit, the excitement of our students. It really was a moment of pride for them and also our families. The sense of pride for them really was the highlight of the event.
And what a fun-filled night with so much talent on display. And among the skills and attributes reflected in the learner profile are to be of quality character and the expectation that students will be collaborators. Tonight's Heart of Henrico recognition lifts up groups of students at several schools who not only exemplify those attributes, but also demonstrate a commitment to helping others. Watch this.
I have been working with Noah's Children since 2012.
I have worked with Noah's Children before, and luckily, we have a partnership with Noah's Children's Hospital. Usually, they collect pieces of original artwork from students and auction them off at their big fundraiser. And this year, they were going to do something sort of unique.
And this year, the idea was, we're going to build a dollhouse, but we want individual schools to work on different components of the dollhouse.
Did you find...
Lifer Change is a group where we help Noah's Children, which is a nonprofit organization.
We made a dollhouse, and we did the kitchen, and we had to paint all of the furniture.
We built decorations, and it was really fun.
I made the little chair cushions, and I helped paint the furniture and stuff. It turned out really good.
Have you talked to Noah's Children in this hospital? Are there any...
Our club is a Leo Club. We meet every Thursday, and during that time, we do different projects.
We're doing like the dollhouse project. So, we worked on one part, which was the boys' room, and then we decided to make it like a Toy Story theme. So, the colors are like blue, like how Andy's room is.
My contribution was the canvas. So, you can see in the boys' bedroom, there's going to be like a little red smiley face with a black canvas. That was me.
Our girls here in fifth grade, we worked on the living room part of it. So, we decided on the theme, we decided on the color. They painted the furniture, they designed frames that were made out of a special kind of clay that we baked and not cut mirrors for them. They designed the artwork, and they even drew on the floor to make it look like a wooden floor. So, they had a vintage theme.
It was a fun opportunity. The students came up with all the ideas, how they wanted to decorate, what's the theme. I mean, I think we were just like, whatever it is, we'll do it. Doing something like this is that the students take ownership, and they can see that even as an 11, 12, 13-year-old, they can truly make a difference in people's lives. And the money that they're able to raise and the support that they're able to give back to Noah's Children, it really gives them a chance to connect with the community and, in some cases, a part of our community that they wouldn't necessarily even know about if we didn't have this opportunity.
What an uplifting story. Congratulations to all of our students and their teachers for taking on such a meaningful project. Madam Chair, that completes tonight's Henrico Highlights.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cashwell. The next item on our agenda is the reading of the mission statement. Mrs. Shea, will you do us the honors, please?
Absolutely. "Henrico County Public Schools: An Innovative Leader in Educational Excellence Will Actively Engage Our Students in Diverse Educational, Social, and Civic Learning Experiences That Inspire and Empower Them to Become Contributing Citizens."
Thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is the public forum. There are a total of two citizens this evening that have signed up in advance to address board members. This is the time when citizens are invited to address any matter of concern about the school division. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly state your name and school affiliation, if applicable, and the subject of your remarks before speaking. After stating your name, please place the number you were given in the cart near the podium. Speakers must present their remarks to the school board, not to the audience, and may provide copies of their comments to the school board clerk. The use of obscenity or defamation is strictly prohibited and will be ruled out of order. To assist you in tracking your time while addressing the board, there is a timekeeping system displaying the elapsed time on the screen. Speakers will also receive a notice from me, the chair, when your time has expired. The school board is here today to hear from you. We will not be responding to speakers' concerns or questions during the public forum. However, a Henrico staff member will follow up with you. Stakeholders also have the opportunity to provide written comments through an online form in advance of this meeting. Those comments are shared with the school board members prior to the meeting and posted in board docs. Equal consideration and attention will be given to both written and in-person comments. We do appreciate your attendance here this evening and for providing input to the board. The first speaker is Speaker Number One. Speaker Number One. Okay, Speaker Number Two. Now, Speaker Number Two. All right then. Well, the next item on our agenda is the approval of consent items. Board members, are there any items on this list that we should break out for separate discussion? No? Reverend Cooper, none? Hearing, none? Then may I have a motion, please, to approve the consent items.
Madam Chair, I move that the school board accept, approve, and/or award items 9.01 through 9.17 on the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Items 9.01 to 9.17 on the consent agenda are approved. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Board members, is there any unfinished business? Hearing, none. The next item on the agenda is new business. Board members, is there any new business? I believe we have committee updates from three of our board members. Please know, for those listening or watching or watching this meeting back, that board members serve on a variety of committees. Not all meet monthly, therefore not all have monthly updates at this monthly meeting. First on our report list, I believe, is, what, Ms. Ogburn? Oh, Mrs. Shea. Mrs. Shea.
All right. I'm going to give a brief update on our Business Advisory Committee, who works with our career in technical education. A few months ago, we had our Career Rodeo, and over 440 resumes of our students were handed out at the rodeo. Additionally, Signing Day, that has become an annual event that we piloted here in Henrico, will be on May 23rd, and we are expecting over 100 students to participate. The Hermitage Ace Expansion, as well as the Hermitage and Highland Springs Ace Renovations are underway and currently on track for completion by fall 2023, which is tremendously exciting. And then I'll share one challenge. Hiring instructors for CTE is a significant challenge, as they have additional requirements beyond traditional licensure. For example, nursing instructors have to meet requirements from the Board of Nursing and VDOE. This year, VDOE has rejected multiple candidates of ours that the Board of Nursing has approved. So, Mr. Baden, as you all know, is always thinking outside the box, and so looking at ways to leverage partnerships. For example, ours with Bon Secours, where they hire a nurse at their rate of pay, and we contract with them... we contract with them for what we can pay. So really looking at how to expand this model with other businesses that are willing to participate, but also in general, looking to eliminate barriers for hiring high-quality instructors for our CTE.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea. Next this evening is Mrs. Ogburn.
I'll be real quick. The Maggie Walker Regional School Board met this morning and had just a few announcements on April 22. Over 200 5th graders will be visiting Maggie Walker Governor's School from the various partnering districts, that's 14 in all, for Dare to be a Dragon Day. And that, the dragon, is the Maggie Walker mascot. And they will be able to participate in a variety of workshops, and it's all opportunity for learning outside the box. And this is part of their outreach to younger students, to give them a chance of, to get a sneak peek at Maggie Walker when they're young, to see what is possible for them in the future. Also, another interesting program coming up at Maggie Walker on April 28 will be Grandparents' Day, and students are allowed to and encouraged to invite their grandparents to come to school with them, get a tour of the school, see what their school looks like, and they have a reception in the afternoon, so grandparents get to come back to high school. The next board meeting, the Regional School Board meets monthly, and that next meeting is the 18th of May, and graduation for Maggie Walker is on the 26th of May at the Altria Theater. And so all of those things are in preparation at Maggie Walker. So, thank you. That's it.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ogburn. And then the next updates actually are from me this evening. First off, the Multilingual Advisory Committee. We were supposed to meet this past Tuesday, April 18. We did not. However, I just want to highlight for everyone that the Cape Saff Festival is coming up on May 6, from 12 noon to 8:00 PM at Browns Island. And a way to find out more information is www.capesaffefestival.com. There are opportunities available for our students to volunteer, those needing volunteer hours, as well as it's just a great day for activities and fun for the family down on Browns Island. The next committee that I serve on is the Superintendent Student Advisory Committee. And we last met April 13 on an online meeting. And the topic of conversation that Dr. Noel facilitated on behalf of Dr. Cashwell was receiving feedback from students about the Student Code of Conduct. Student voice is a very important part of board consideration when we make decisions. And of course, the Student Code of Conduct couldn't be more... They had a lot to say about it, and we look forward to Dr. Noel's presentation to us, I believe, in June, if I'm not mistaken. Maybe May. Maybe May, coming soon. And then the last update I have for you this evening is early learning preschool. Just to remind folks that the window for early learning preschool registration opened in January. Any and all information is available out at Henrico Schools online. And that's all I have tonight for updates. And lastly, on our agenda this evening is the announcement of meeting dates. Please know, our next school board meeting will be a work session scheduled on Thursday, May 11, 2023, at 1:00 PM. This meeting is adjourned.